Just like to introduce the person that we have leading our moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Her name is Bridgette Delay. She is the daughter of Jack and Linda Delay, sister to not such a great athlete, John Delay, but does teach in our school system, and her sister that Lauren Delay. Lifelong residence here in PBD, graduated from Bishop Fenwick, which we won't hold that against for too much, but was a three-sport standout athlete, hold many school records as a lacrosse player and as well as a basketball and volleyball. She graduated from Salem State University, a standout athlete in basketball and lacrosse there, was awarded the President's Cup Senior Year, 2013 Conference Woman Lacrosse Player of the Year, named Team Captain MVP for Basketball, two-time MVP Women's Lacrosse. She teaches phys ed and health at SS Tech, and had recently shown her pride by buying a home with her fiancee Steve here in PBD. We're so glad to have her here with us, and so glad she's moved back here in PBD where Said her name earlier, but I'll say it again, Bridgette Delay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the record, Mr. President. Go move. Just like to make the opening meeting statement. This meeting is being televised live by Cable Channel 9 and being taped by PBD Access TV, and also being recorded by a city council stenographer. If you indulge me a little bit, I'd like to take some of the hearings out of order because of people may be here and things are continued. If you can look at 4B to be continued. Any objections? John? Excuse me, Mr. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, excuse me, moved to receive late communication from Attorney Jack Kelty requesting that tonight's meeting on 795 Jubilee Drive be continued until March 14th, 2018. So moved. Oh, I'm sorry, that's conservationist March 14th. March 22nd, 2018. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. If Counselor Gould will help me here on 4G to ask for a continuance. So moved. Heard the vote? Heard the motion?
Yeah, Brian Kelly.
4G?
4G.
I'm sorry.
Let it continue, I'm sorry. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. We'll go back to hearing 4A. Counselor? Okay. Clerk, is this letting me know if anyone's here for the Brian Kelly dealership? If anyone's here in the audience, that has been continued. I don't want you to be waiting around all night, waiting. So again, for Brian Kelly's dealership, that has been continued. The clerk, please read the notice for 4A.
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city PBD, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 22nd, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank E. Weggins Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Frank A. Perullo, 51 Bristow Street, Saugus, Mass., for a junk dealer's license to operate a thrift shop at 86B Main Street, PBD, Mass. PBD City Council Counselor Edward R. Charis, City Council President.
Is the petitioner here? Petitioner here. Would you like to please come up to the podium? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Frank Perullo. My address is 51 Bristow. Okay. My name is Frank Perullo. My address is 51 Bristow Street, Saugus, Massachusetts. Sure thing, yeah. So, I would like to open a retail clothing thrift store in PBD. The plan is to sell to the community. We want to sell clothing items, possibly household items, and things like that.
Anyone? All in favor? Would anyone like to speak in favor? In the audience, anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Please come and state your name. Opposition? No, please come down to the podium, please.
Yes, my name is Anne Quinn. I live on Linville Street in PBD. So I have no particular interest in this particular property, but I'm thinking about the whole issue of the mayor's emphasis on upgrading all of Main Street, and I'm not sure that this is the kind of business that is appropriate in light of what the mayor is trying to accomplish. I have communicated with a couple of the counselors to note that there is a thrift shop at St. John's, there on Chestnut Street. There is a thrift shop at St. Thomas's Church, and there is also a thrift shop at the Senior Center. So I'm not sure that there's any kind of need, public need, for this kind of a business in this particular space. And in light of what the mayor's trying to do with upgrading Main Street and its business, I just object to this.
Counselor McGinn. Any else?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've spoken to the applicant a couple of times. He is eager to get started on this endeavor. I've also been contacted about this use from a few stakeholders and with concerns similar to what we just heard. I just need to point out that this commercial use is allowed by right in this location. So what's before us tonight is not a special permit on the use, but in fact, it's a licensing request, and I don't see any rationale or reason to deny the request, so my intent is to support it. I'll defer now to the counselors.
Counselor Sasso.
So I just had a question of the petitioner, as far as the items that you're selling. How will you go about getting those items that you're going to be offering to the public for sale?
Right now, the plan is to go to, well, we're going to accept donations from friends and family, as well as attend storage auctions and buy the unused clothing from storage lockers, and of course, any other donations anyways that we can get clothing. Not purchasing from wholesalers or anything like that.
Okay, and if, say, someone came in off the street and they wanted to sell you, you know, their 20 used Levi's, will you be buying them from people who come in from the community?
No, because we're not, we're not going to buy from wholesalers or anything in that type of regard.
Okay. And just one last question. And as far as jewelry or anything of that nature, precious metals, will you be purchasing any of that?
No, we don't plan to.
Thank you. Good luck.
Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really didn't have a question until Counselor Sasso asked his. In the opening remarks, Counselor McGinn had stated that you were eager to open your business, but then in your remarks to Counselor Sasso, you basically, you kind of led me to the assumption that you don't have an inventory right now. So are you, it looks like you're going to try to accumulate an inventory, but do you have an inventory?
Yeah, my garage and apartment is bursting full of used bags of clothing, just ready to stock the store with, so I have an inventory ready to go, and plans to get more when we start, so everything's in place to get to go. Yeah, and this thrift store too is mostly like brand name clothing, so like Nike, Under Armour products like that. It's not going to be like, you know, I know run-of-the-mill thrift stores have like dishes and certain things like that, and it comes with a certain look and connotation to it, but we want to set ourselves apart.
Thank you very much.
Manny Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counselor McGinn, 86B. Where is that, on Main?
Mr. President, through you to Counselor Manning-Martin, that's directly next to the library. So if you're facing the library, it's on the right-hand side.
Okay, right, the center of the downtown, right, coming into, okay, right by the library. Okay. And through you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. McGinn, and through you, Mr. Chairman, to probably Tim. It's been pointed out that this is not a request for a special permit, so then therefore highest and best use and does this meet a desirable local need does not apply. So if this is just for licenses, it's for a junk dealer's license. So is this just a request for transfer? Could you educate me on that?
No, this is a new license, Counselor. Anything that's sold or purchased secondhand requires a junk dealer's license, so it's a requirement under our city code. So this is a new license.
Okay, so, and if it's by right, what would the reasons, what reasons could we deny it then? This seems to be kind of, if there's no reason, we can deny it. It just, this seems like, you know, a moot point to be before us if it's by right.
It's the council's prerogative, per se, if you want to grant the license. License is, I mean, these licenses are controlled, you know, by this body. It's up to you whether you want to grant it or not.
Right, okay, thank you. I thought so, because when we say it's by right, we give the impression that this council doesn't have any authority to deny it, when of course we do. Just because it's by right, they still have to come before us, and it's our decision whether we grant it or not. I for one would like to see the highest and best use certainly of the downtown area. We've invested a lot of money in it, we've made a lot of revitalization efforts, we've spent a lot of the taxpayers' money to purchase property downtown in order to do just that with flood mitigation effort, with beautification effort, with traffic reconfiguration, and this is right in our downtown area, and it's a junk dealer's license for a thrift shop. And no offense to the petitioner, but, you know, we have an obligation to our constituents making all these investments that we raise the bar, and we've been talking about that for years. And again, we've invested a lot of money and time and effort in planning in order to do just that, and this is right next to the George PBD Institute Library, the center of our downtown, and entrance to our city, and do we want a junk dealer there? Do we want a thrift shop there? I absolutely do not want one there. That is not what we've been working towards, and simply because we say it is by right does not indicate that this council cannot raise the bar and aim higher for a higher and best use of our downtown area. And I think we have an obligation to do just that for our constituents, for the future of our city, and to continue to move the city forward in the direction in which we have been working diligently and after a lot of expense in order to do so. So I will not be supporting this, and I would strongly suggest to my colleagues that they think long and hard before they approve a junk dealer's license to offer for a thrift shop in our downtown area after all the investments that we've made. So I will not be supporting it, and I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Counselor Rosaloff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Mr. Spanos. I know you said that this is a relatively new license. Do we have a finite number of those licenses to hand out? Is there a set limit on them?
There is no limit, Counselor.
Okay.
On the number of junk dealer licenses.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Gravel.
So, to you, through you to Counselor McGinn, is this the Cricket Building?
Yes.
Which sits next to the nail salon? Anton's?
That's correct.
And to Tim, what kind of licenses would it take to put a barber shop in there?
Just an occupancy permit from the building inspector.
What kind of license would it take to put another hair salon in there?
Same thing.
Another nail shop?
Same.
See, the building's owned privately, and by right, a lot of things could go in there. And yes, the city's invested a lot of money on the street, and we should encourage the uses that we want. This building, actually, there was an offer in on this particular property for a craft shop. It was Rustic was the name of the company. They wanted to do signage, and one of the concerns that the Main Street Group had at the time was that it was only going to get used three nights a week, and it wasn't going to promote the idea of, you know, bringing people to the downtown. Now, are there greater things than thrift shops? Well, it depends on what you want that thrift shop to be. I think we all have different impressions of what a thrift shop is. When I hear a thrift shop at St. Anne's, or St. John's, or at the Senior Center, I know what those thrift shops are, and the one at the Senior Center is really not a bad place. There's also a thrift shop right next to Tim's barber shop, and I frankly don't find that offensive at all. There are, they have quite a few, it's, the interiors are done nicely, and it's well-presented, it looks like a clothing store. Yeah, they're not selling Brooks Brothers suits, but they have some pretty interesting women's clothing, men's clothing. They even brought in some antiques that they sell. I know they do consignment. Are you planning to do consignment?
No, we're not.
So the quality of the clothing that you're planning to bring in, slightly used, very used, how do you make that determination?
Slightly used, we're trying to go for a more high-end look. We're not trying to look like those typical thrift stores like you think, and we actually have already purchased like brand-new racks, brand-new places to put our clothing, everything looks brand-new, and like, kind of has a very nice, not upscale, but as close as we can get look to it.
See, and, you know, in downtown Hyannis, there's a thrift shop right as you enter into the city. It's pretty prominent to the right as you enter their gateway, and it's, they display their clothing out on the sidewalk very nicely during the summer months. So I guess, you know, I understand where people are a little concerned, but, you know, our goal is to get, I think every counselor here who's participated in making the investment in the downtown from the streets and the sidewalks to the landscaping, et cetera, we want something that looks and feels the quality, so when we attract people to live down there, which is our goal, we can bring some vibrance back. So we're not looking for, you know, I know it gets classified as a junk dealer license, I never quite agreed with that, you know, and we have one junk dealer's license catch-all for everything, so it's anything secondhand. So if you sell coins, if you sell used games, you get a junk dealer's license, which is kind of an odd name for it, because it degrades, I think, some of the product that you're trying to present. I certainly don't want to see, from my perspective, I have a harder time seeing another barber shop, and then a nail salon, you know, another hair salon. You know, I'd love to see a restaurant in there, but basically, the square footage is not conducive, we know that from the work we've done on the Main Streets. So I think anybody that can bring a quality look and feel that's not a detraction from the downtown, I think is a good effort. So I can't find any reason, not knowing what your product is, except that you say you're going to put in new racks and have higher-quality clothing. I think if you don't, you're going to end up being out of business anyway. So, building owner has the right to rent his building, the uses that are in there. We have a right to deny your license, I understand that, but I can't see of a good viable reason why I would want to deny it. So I tend to be on the side of supporting it at this point in time.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Turco.
Thank you. I just, I neglected to make a point, and I wanted to, through you, Mr. President, to counsel him again. Peter, there was a thrift shop pretty close to this location, I believe, last year at some point. Did that come before us also, because I don't seem to remember it coming before us?
It did.
So we've approved the same use in very close proximity to this in the past, so, I mean, that's the only issue I would see with it, that we've done it in the past, and I understand Counselor Manning, you actually, I agree with you wholeheartedly on the image we want to move forward with, but, and I guess I'm agreeing with both of you, because in Counselor Gravel's respect, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be this horrible-looking establishment. Ginger's Closet, which Counselor Gravel points out in Ward 1 on Lynn Street, you would never know it was a thrift shop, you would think it was a clothing store, and it's very heavily used, so I just wanted to make that point, but thank you.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to approve the application from Frank A. Perullo, 51 Bristow Street, Saugus, Mass., for a junk dealer's license to operate, sorry, preceding that motion, I'd like to close the public hearing.
You finished?
Do we vote on the close of public hearing?
On the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, move to approve the application from Frank A. Perullo, 51 Bristow Street, Saugus, Mass., for a junk dealer's license to operate a thrift shop at 86B Main Street, PBD, Mass. With the following condition, applicant shall have policies and procedures in place to address after-hours deposits of goods at this location. So moved. And on the motion, that condition is a specific request of the Health Department. We've all seen donation boxes and so forth overflowing. The expectation would be that we're not having people dropping off goods after hours in front of this location and giving us unsightly accumulations of donated goods, just so you're clear on that condition. Thank you, Mr. President.
Roll call vote.
Counselors O'Neal.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
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 Thanks, Joel. Manning-Martin.
No.
Rosagnol.
Yes.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravel.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 1100.
Move to hearing 4C. Excuse me, before I go to 4C, Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, the property owned by my wife and I at 8 Park Street, directly abuts 43 Main Street, I'm choosing to recuse myself from the city council debate and vote on the special permit matter before the city council tonight in order to avoid the potential of a conflict of interest, given the prospect that the council's deliberations may result in an outcome that could affect the financial interests I possess. As a property owner, I do not want to even raise the prospect of any appearance of impropriety, given the juxtaposition of my home being located directly next to 43 Main Street parcel identified in the application before the council. Such circumstances distinguish this situation from my job as a council at the act upon similar matters in my area or in my ward. I do, however, retain my right to provide information and to speak before the council as a member of the general public, area resident and abutter. Thank you.
4C, Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Clerk, read the notice, please.
Notice is hereby given that the city council, the city PBD, sorry, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 22nd, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Frank E. Weggins Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., on the application from Sarah Narcus, 24 Saxony Road, Framingham, Mass., for a special permit for community and event space at 43 Main Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance, PBD. City Council Counselor Edward R. Charis, City Council President.
Would the petitioner come to the podium? Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Sarah Narcus, 24 Saxony Road, Framingham, Massachusetts. I'm seeking the opportunity to bring a community and event space to the 43 Main Street property here in PBD. This is a long journey for me to find a property that would be suitable for this use. My background is in event planning, and I'm thrilled about the opportunity for 43 Main Street. This is essentially restoring the property to some semblance of its original use, built over 100 years ago as a theater. So the goal for the use of the space will be to have the second floor as a community and event space, wide-open space that will be available for use for all kinds of events and functions and gatherings, and the first floor will remain retail. So we have interest from Maki Sushi, that's currently located on the first floor, to expand their operation, to take up some more square footage, so that's the proposal.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Bruce Lawson. I live at 25 Collins Street in PBD. I'm also Hi, my name is Bruce Lawson. I live at 25 Collins Street in PBD. I'm also a business owner, and I would like to speak on behalf of Sarah's proposal. I think the area has only three spaces that I'm aware of for functions: this very room, the Sutton Room at the library, and the Cave C Hall. And I believe Sarah's proposal is for a space that will serve different purposes, a commercial space that she will have much more incentive to keep as a fancy type of hall that will attract people to downtown. I think there's been some wonderful advancements from my viewpoint, the theater, the coffee shop, and I think that Sarah's proposal will be another similar magnet to make downtown a draw. Brothers has come back. I think it's just another piece of the puzzle to make PBD Square alive again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Jeanette McGinn, and I live at Eight Park Street with my husband and our children. We are direct abutters of 43 Main Street. I believe this is a good use for the building, and that the business will generally be beneficial to ongoing efforts to improve the downtown. My support for the plan comes with concern about activities that will take place in the rear of the building, that generate noise, light, odors, and impact the privacy that could potentially have an impact on the peaceful enjoyment of our property. Noise from trucks coming and going early in the morning and late at night, loading and unloading, and noise from gatherings on the elevated outdoor deck, and cooking in the rear of the building will impact residents. Our neighborhood is the same as others in the city, in that people need to be able to sleep at night so that children can go to school, and adults can get up for work. I have also spoken to other neighbors that share these concerns, that we're not able to be here tonight. The conditions, as listed in our letter to the members of the City Council, address the concerns we have related to noise, disruption from trucks and other vehicles, light, smoke, and privacy. The conditions will help protect our quality of life. The conditions would help make sure that this use will not be injurious to the established or future character of the vicinity and the neighborhood. Taking this into consideration, I fully support the application, to the extent that the conditions attached to our letter are incorporated into any approved special permit. We have corresponded with Ms. Narcas and collaboratively arrived at these parameters that will promote a positive relationship with the neighborhood. We support Ms. Narcas' efforts to run a successful social function and community business in downtown PBD. Thank you for considering these comments.
Can I have a motion to receive eight I? Moved. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in favor? Please come and please state your name and address.
Pat, excuse me, Pat Tedesco, 28, Jennifer Lane, PBD, Mass. Most of the council owners, myself and Brody's, have a lot invested in 1 and 3 Main Street. So we'd love to see new things happening. Sarah did reach out to us and spoke to us about the venue that she wants to put there, and we agreed that it would be a great thing to happen down PBD. It will bring people walking around PBD Square. It'll bring PBD into the restaurants and visiting prior to maybe even just going to visit the venue. If they're going to rent it, they're going to come down PBD and hopefully spend some money and visit us. So we're 100% for it. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Ann Quinn. I live on Lydrell Street in PBD. I'm not sure I'm neither in favor or opposed to this, but I have some questions that I haven't seen addressed yet, and I'm wondering about the interior management. I remember going to the movies on Saturday afternoon in the Strand Theater, so I am familiar with that building. And I'm just wondering if it's going to be, I don't know what the interior is, but it will be restored to some kind of historical appropriateness, or is it just going to be a big open, empty space? And we haven't seen any descriptions of exactly what is going, that space is going to look like, and that's my question.
Petitioner, would you like to address that?
Thank you for your question. Unfortunately, the building itself was stripped of a lot of the historical value when it was renovated in 1957. So what remains of the original building from 1910 is the cement block walls, which are the structure that is the building. Some semblance of the, kind of the facade at the exterior of the building, that, you know, some of the cornices that haven't fallen down. In the interior, there is an original tin ceiling, which is in disrepair, but some of it exists. And that's about it. So everything else was removed during the renovation from 1957. So our plan is to maintain as much as we can of the original character of the building, but it will not be a restoration to the original state of the building. It's just not possible. So the plans that are proposed, particularly for the facade, were done with the original facade in mind. We have the historic images for what the facade looked like from, you know, the early half of the century. We kept those in mind when we planned what the facade should look like for this building. And I know that's of utmost importance to downtown, this building being right in the middle of PBD Square, okay? So the facade is one piece, but the interior, the plan is for it to be a big, wide-open room. What it currently looks like is small, partitioned rooms. It's been used as a self-storage space for dozens of years on the second floor. So if you walk in now, you can't see anything. It's just small partition rooms. So after demolishing those, we would think that the building would be able to be a wide-open space again.
Anyone, yes, Ms. Quinn. Please, please come up to the podium.
What are your plans for cooking facilities, kitchen for caterers? Could you address that?
So the architectural plans that we've designed do not include a commercial kitchen for this building, and that is by design. So the idea is that the building will be a blank slate in which, you know, community planners, social planners can create the space that they're looking for with as much flexibility as possible. So to that end, the goal will be that outside caterers can come in, most of the time in buildings of this type. So in historic homes, in warehouses, in backyard-tented weddings, this is my background. And most of the time, the cooking is done off-site. So most of the prep is done at the caterer's commercial kitchen. We will have a prep room inside the space, which can be used for warming, it can be used for plating, and it can be used for serving. But no cooking will be done inside the building. On the exterior of the building, we are proposing to allow cooking. So typically, the way that works is that the caterer will bring on-site the devices that they need to cook food. Usually, it's a protein, so a grill for steak or, you know, a smoker. Those are typically the devices that they use. They bring them with them, they cook the food, and they remove them when they leave.
Is there anyone else in favor? In favor? Anyone in oppose? Anyone in oppose? Please state your name and address.
My name is Russell Donovan, 12 Queer Road, South PBD. I find me? We're going to stay? I find the application lacking for a number of reasons. It's vague. What is community and event space? Is there a definition? What's the requirements of that area? What are the reparking requirements? It sounds nice, but what is it really? It's lacking in detail. Is there a communication from community development of their requirements? We talked about cooking. Nobody talked about parking. Nobody talked about the occupancy, how many people would be visiting it, what's the impact on the neighborhoods, what's the impact in downtown Main Street? It's not, it's a very broad, nonspecific use. And I have concerns about that. Because if they have an event there, and it is a blockbuster, you'll be shutting down Main Street. There'll be no parking spaces available. It's very vague, and it's not specific enough for you to make a recommendation or approval tonight. I'd like to see some more detail. I would like to see the community development's endorsement or details of their support for a community and event space. We spend a lot of time talking about special permits and about the details of parking, lighting, neighborhood impact, traffic studies. We come here tonight with the special permit, which is a special permitting authority for the community, by you people, and we have no details, other than it sounds nice. It sounds like the right thing to do, but it might be the wrong thing to do in that neighborhood. And I think tonight, with the lack of information that's been presented to the City Council, you should continue the hearing, ask for more details before you make a recommendation tonight for approval. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in opposition? Here are none. Move open to the council. Councilor Turco?
Move to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, Councilor.
Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed?
So, Mr. President, I just threw you to Ms. Narcas. I just had some questions about this, and I know you've had some conversations with your abutters, your neighbors, possibly new neighbors. Have you had a chance to review the requests of Jeanette and Peter McGinn for conditions on operating in the area? And you're okay with all those conditions? That works for me. My question is, I looked at your website, I looked at your Facebook page today, very impressive. I just had a question. You have a location on your Facebook page, I believe it was, of Oak Square in Newton. Do you have a second facility?
No, that's just where I used to reside. So I work out of a home office now, and I used to reside in Brighton, in Oak Square, and now I live in Framingham. So my current business, without a hitch, which is, you know, the name under which I'm essentially applying with that business card that you saw on my Facebook page, that business is run out of my home.
Okay, thank you. And as far as, this is, this building was owned by Norman Lee at one point, if I'm not mistaken, correct, that's who he purchased it from. And so in front of that building, there is a, and I'm trying to remember, I actually looked at it online today, but I couldn't tell what it was, the parking in front is lined off with yellow hash marks. Is that a loading zone, no parking area?
Yeah, there's one spot in front of the building, and there's probably a bus length that is a loading zone that's used by most of Main Street for deliveries.
Okay, thank you. And in the rear, there's, what, approximately five or six parking spaces, maybe?
There are, and there's quite a bit of asphalt kind of leading up to those spaces. So sufficient space for both the use of those spaces, as well as loading and unloading.
Okay. And you have no issue with that space in the front, that there's no parking? Because next, I'm going to address Mr. Donovan's point about parking, so I'm just trying to get into that issue. You're aware that you can't park vehicles in the front of that building, other than for loading and unloading. To Mr. Donovan's point, this is in the B.C., which there's no parking requirement for businesses in the B.C. And Russell, I guess that's, B.C. zoning, for those of you that don't know, but that's why parking was not addressed in there. It's not required in the area. But I do have that question for you. If you have an event that it has 300 guests, what's the intention on getting these people there?
Yeah, thank you for that, and you certainly aren't the first to ask me that question. So it's not addressed in the application because it's not a requirement of this particular zoning. However, in reality, we're trying to run a successful business. So I have to be ready to address that question, both for you, but also for clients that I'm trying to attract to this space. So a few things. The first is that PBD has, for a downtown city, quite a bit of parking, hundreds of municipal spots. The use of these spots would largely be opposite what many of the downtown businesses are using the spots for. So to the extent that we hope to operate events, you know, all day and all night, that's just not going to be feasible for what people need the space for. And so I expect that people, especially with larger events, will be interested in using the space on the evenings and in the weekends, in which case it would be kind of opposite many of the retail shops or, you know, folks downtown. So I think that the municipal spots absolutely support the function of this space. In addition, the kinds of events that I think are the bread and butter of what we're hoping to have in this space often provide transportation for their guests. So when you think about a social event with hundreds of people who are drinking, the celebrant will provide a bus from a local location, usually a hotel or an Uber code. People are not going to drive to a party, everyone, and drink and then drive home. I would hope not. So in general, buses are provided, shuttle buses from a local hotel to the loading zone, and they do loops the entire time, or people take an Uber.
Thank you. And I don't want to say, I support the idea. I like the idea a lot. I just want to make sure it's done right, again, to Mr. Donovan's point. And in the rear of the building, you know, I know you've talked to Councilman McGinn and you've, and some of the other neighbors, and you've addressed the noise, the cooking in the rear. I have questions about the cooking. We just dealt with a facility with a commercial smoker, and it's no small feat to keep that from neighbors' windows. I mean, is there a plan in effect if there's an issue with neighbors with, I'm actually hoping there's a long-term plan to move that to the interior of the building. And I guess I'll start with that question. Is there a plan down the road so that it's not outdoor cooking all the time, and that you may, at some point, provide a space for indoor cooking?
No, there's no plan for that. That's not a typical use for a space like this. So where I come from, the background that I have, is I've worked in hundreds of spaces like this across New England, mostly in the greater Boston area. And unless the venue itself is providing onsite catering, which is not something that I'm looking to do, that's part of the appeal of this space, is that people can have Brody's cater it, or they can bring in East Meets West, the fanciest, you know, caterer from downtown Boston, and everywhere in between. Part of the appeal is that we are not providing the onsite catering. And so whenever onsite catering is not provided, there's generally no commercial kitchen onsite.
Okay. And last point on the caterer. So you'll have these caterers, they're actually hired by your client, to come in. How does that give you any control? I mean, you know, for instance, one of the issues brought up by your neighbors, like smoking in the rear of the building. How would you control a caterer from, you know, music in the rear noise to the abutting neighbors, smoking? I mean, whereas you're not the one that hired them, you need to have some control over that. And I just want to make sure that you're cognizant of these neighbors that are very, very close in the rear to that spot. And I hope that, it seems like through your referral letters, which are some people that I respect greatly in this city, Sue Ring Brown, Martha Holden, Jeanette and Peter McGinn, and as well as others, you've done your due diligence and you come highly spoken for, so I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that this isn't, you know, an application-only. I want to make sure that you follow through with these neighbors throughout, because it's very important to that neighborhood.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think it's important to know that this is a family business. So my business partner, who's with me, is my mom, and we will be staffing every event. Like, there's never going to be a time where we are not onsite when an event is taking place. So the contract that the client signs will be that they have to abide by the rules of that space and, of course, of the city of PBD. It will be our job to enforce that the rules that we've put in place with the city and the laws that are, you know, that are the laws that are, you know, that are, that are in place are abided by. So, for me, one way to do that is by limiting the caterers that can use the onsite location. You know, so many venues have a list of a dozen or so people who can use the space. Anyone who's not on that list might be permitted to use it, but they have to do maybe a special walk-through with me to make sure that I trust that they're going to follow the rules. So, what it comes down to is that our job as business owners and as proprietors, who are there onsite at the event, is to enforce the rule.
Thank you. And again, I do want to make sure you know that I do support this, this special permit. But my last thing to you, in your application, it says construction hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and it just says M through S. I just want to make you aware that the construction hours in the city of PBD, it would be Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And on Saturday, we have 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is allowed, and then no Sunday construction hours. So, I just wanted you to be aware that the ones you wrote in the application will not be the same ones that, and threw you to the clerk. If we could just change that in the application to notate for all applicants that those are our, by ordinance, our construction hours, then we wouldn't, you know, we don't have to address it in the future, just. But thank you, and I'll open it up to the council.
Councilor Manny Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I for one, want to say that if you can bring in events with 300 people on weekends and evenings and shuts down Main Street, then you're a success. And those are the changes that we've enacted over the years, hoping to draw a business like you that would bring foot traffic, that would bring, make PBD a downtown a destination, such that we'll be able to rent out our storefronts to other similar businesses that would be drawn to the population that you're serving. So, I think this is perfect fit for our area, exactly what we've been working towards in our investments. And I was impressed with your application, the fact that you reached out to all the surrounding businesses. And I'm going to share with the public, we have the owner of Santoro's, who commented that the proposed renovation of this building will result in a very positive impact on the appearance of downtown. Martha Holden, former director of the library, now on the PBD Cultural Collaborative, hopes that downtown PBD is regarded as a cultural destination, and she feels that what you're bringing to the downtown will help make that happen. You have many, many letters of recommendation here that are impressive. Just a couple jumped out at me with the terminology that they had used. And again, Councilor Turkle had mentioned Susan Ring Brown, who also, you know, mentioned that this space will complement not only the Black Box Theater, but also the vision of PBD as a destination. Having, okay, PBD as a destination. The, another business owner from downtown, who's also a resident of PBD, said this proposed renovation of this building will result in a very positive impact on the appearance of downtown. I expect that people will travel from a distance for this community space, and that will bring business to PBD. And this, Dan Healy, this will provide opportunity to increase foot traffic during the day, weekends, nights, and weekend hours. So, this is a perfect fit. I wish you the best of luck, and this is exactly what I hope continues, and that we support businesses and efforts like this. I wish you and your mom the best of luck, and I look forward to checking it out once it's up and running. Thank you.
Councilor Rosno.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Threw you to Sarah. I just have a couple of questions. Most of my other ones have been addressed. Where it says lift, I'm assuming that's an elevator? Is that handicapped accessibility to get up to the second floor?
It is a lift, and it is handicap accessibility to get up to the second floor.
Okay. And on the plans, on the first floor, that space, that is not going to be the tenant, is that going to be open for any type of venue as a precursor to go upstairs? Like, I'm thinking like a cocktail hour or anything that, in that manner?
Are you referring to like the lobby space where the stairwell is?
Correct.
It won't be big enough for that, to be honest. I think that would be a wonderful goal, but the real goal is to get people in from Main Street and to get them upstairs. There's no internal staircase or a lift right now in the building. The only way to get to the second floor is outside.
Okay. But that's all going to be completed? Okay. And then my last question is regarding alcohol. I know that you had mentioned previously that you're not going to be having a kitchen or anything in that manner. Will alcohol be served at these venues? Who will be in charge of monitoring that? Will there be strict guidelines with your tenants at will, as far as that type of procedure goes? Thank you.
Thank you, yes. So, I'm appearing before the liquor board on Monday. That's our scheduled time to go chat with them about what they're hoping for from this space. So, my understanding is that there are liquor licenses available for purchase, so that's one route to go. My preferred route is actually to leave that in the hands of the experts, who are the TIP-certified bartenders that come with the catering staff or with the bartending company. They carry liquor liability insurance, and as needed, they apply for one-day special permits for these kinds of events. In general, in Massachusetts, it's on a town-by-town basis, but in general, a private event, a closed event with a guest list, does not require a one-day permit. It just requires that the liquor is served by a TIP-certified bartender who's insured.
Thank you.
Councilor Grevell.
Thank you, Council President. And Sarah, it's nice to meet you in person. You're as much professional in person as you are on the phone. I thought you carried on a great conversation on the phone. I was glad you called and glad we were able to connect, and you certainly make a great presentation here as well. For the knowledge of councils who may not have known, you know, the former owner had wanted to take that building down, and he wanted to put up a multiple condominium apartment type of a complex there, which would have had certainly the issues of parking and everything else associated with it. And the Maki Sushi people I know have been really anxious to expand their location downtown. I've spoken to them on several occasions, and there was a hesitancy of the owner to move the, open it up. And I can see why, because obviously, his thought was, if I'm going to take it down, I don't want to expand a facility and have a bigger issue to take care of. And if I'm not, and I'm going to sell it, I don't want to have a bigger issue to take care of, in case the new owner doesn't have it. So, I think, you know, given the fact that the facility is there, and it was a former entertainment facility, I think you captured the essence. And the pictures of your facade, where you put the PBD Theater in there, which I thought was kind of a nice play. And what you plan to do with the front is a huge improvement to its appearance right now as sort of the, kind of the white blob. And I can't say enough. Now, I know there's always concern, I mean, in terms of an event venue in the middle of a downtown, but I think if anybody has that concern, they ought to go to Rockefeller's in Salem and look at Colonial Hall. My daughter's wedding was there. There's not a nickel's worth of parking there. And you go upstairs, exactly the same way. They have a lift. And it's a beautiful venue inside, as you described it, an open space that you really design according to your needs. And, you know, they hired the caterers and all, and I saw how successful it was. And I agree with you in terms of how people get there. Typically, if it's a wedding event, you know, they're staying at hotels, and they're getting a trolley, or they're getting a bus. They're being brought, they're being returned. If there's parking, usually, the person planning the event plans to bring them from a parking area. And if you think of all the things, and I couldn't agree more with Councilman Manny Martin on this, of all the things we've been trying to do, this and restaurant venues were it. You know, from the idea of getting mixed-use facilities, commercial down, residential up, or fully commercial facilities that bring people in, that make us a little bit of a destination, capitalizing on what I think Martha Holden had stated in her reference letter, and they were nice reference letters, about as you bring people in, people start to realize there's more in PBD than hair salons and nail salons, which have their place, but obviously, this brings people and it attracts people to, oh, I didn't know there were restaurants there, et cetera. So, I think, based on your presentation, both on the phone and here, and the package you put together, I have nothing but confidence that this is going to be a great success, and that you are an entrepreneur worthy of this special permit, and I plan to support it wholeheartedly, and I hope that you're more than 150% successful.
Councilor Gould.
Thank you. Welcome, Sarah. Thrilled to have you here and echo Councilor Grevell's comments. You were very professional, upbeat, positive, and you've presented yourself very well today. I love the renderings that Ryan has put forth for you. It's just a beautiful look of what that building can be. You have a PNS contingent upon approval from us? Okay? I don't think, I don't think there's any doubt that you're going to be successful. Parking is not going to be an issue because of the contingency plans that you've put in place, like as Councilor Grevell said, most venues today are busing people in and out. I think that the McGinn's and the conditions you worked out were very generous, to be honest with you. I'm not looking to change any of them, but to have the conditions of hours being 1:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. where there's no trucks in loading or unloading is very generous. I'm sure you'd like to get everyone out of there as soon as possible, but I can't believe that that's going to be okay for the neighbors, but I'm sure you'll handle that professionally, and I fully support this. I wish you well. Do you have any idea, if approved and signed the final documents, when you might be looking to have your grand opening? Any ideas?
So, I would hope we can close in April. We have a few things pending with our lenders. And then the construction is relatively minimal, actually. It's mostly demolition of what's already there, the partitions. So, we estimate about six months of construction, so later this year.
Thank you. Councilor Saslaw.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I want to also welcome you to PBD. I had a couple of just quick questions. I've never been up in the space that we're talking about, so just to give us some sense, what type of capacity do you actually legitimately see up there?
So, the proposed capacity, based on the assemblies that we're looking at, will be 400 with the current bathrooms that we've put in place. So, the A3 assembly use specifies the bathrooms, the egresses, the square footage that you need to have for what capacity, and that number is 400.
And that would include, so if you had, we'll just use a wedding, it's an easy one. If you had a wedding, that would be 400 people with tables and everything. Wow.
It's quite a large space. So, when you, what you see in the front, you know, width-wise, it's two, three, four times that back, so it's 6,000 square feet on the second floor, completely open.
Great. That sounds good. And I liked the fact, obviously, you're professional, you know what you're doing, and one of the things you covered, I thought, which was very, which was very good, was the, you know, the approved vendor list that you're going to create over time, obviously. It's going to make it easier for you, the expectation. And I also see, also, and we do talk about the big 400 weddings and things of that, which is nice, but you know, wouldn't it be nice, you know, to have like, you know, the Black Box cast party when they finish a production? Because there is no, there is limited space, and this is not really the facility for that. So, I think without a hitch and thinking out of the box, it's going to do very well for you. And I would just say to you, with the, if, I know Councilor Turkle asked you, you've agreed to the conditions that were set before you, and if that becomes an issue, and hopefully it won't, but if it does, you know, be proactive and seek out your neighbors and let them know, listen, can we, you know, it's better to kind of discuss it ahead of time before there's an issue, because like I said, you did agree to a lot. I applaud you for doing that. But if it's something that you feel could harm the business, you know, you might need to revisit something, just be proactive, because I know the neighbors down there want it to be successful, and they'd be happy to work with you. But congratulations, and looking forward to it.
Councilor Melville.
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. President. Just one question slash comment. Will you, have you, you've done a fantastic job reaching out to your abutting, your neighbors, other businesses. One suggestion, and I think you maybe you've already done this, just whoever, will you have like an on-call person that the neighbor or butter could call if they have an issue? Because you are using a third-party caterer, and you're going to have guests, so essentially, you've got a couple of different groups there that the neighbors wouldn't know if they had an issue that they could reach out to.
Yes, and that is specified in the conditions that we put forth with the McGinn's. So, we plan to share our contact information, our direct contact information with all abutters who want to contact us. I would rather hear their complaints directly, if they have any.
Great. And just a comment for the rest. I'm supporting this. This is not typical, that a, just in my experience in my day job, that some, a business coming in like yourself would reach out and be so open with the neighbors, to be so accommodating, to making sure that the neighbors feel like this is, you're being a part of that area. So, to, for my fellow councils, I would say, you don't see that, this is not a typical thing that I have seen in your industry, as somebody that deals with your industry quite a bit. So, I'm very supportive, and I would suggest others be as well. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Just add a couple of things. Being in the hospitality field, to answer, to make a statement on the caterers, you're going to have a preferred list of caterers. They're going to be knocking on your door, and to be able to keep you as a spot, they're going to do everything they can to make sure they don't violate the rules, the smoke and the noise and things of that nature. So, I know as a, as a space for them to have an ongoing relationship with the owner, they're going to do everything they can, so I'm well aware of that. And as your profession, you have an eye of detail, so I'm sure you're going to make sure the building looks fantastic for the wedding party. So, thank you very, very much, and good luck. Councilor Turkle.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to approve the application of Sarah Marcus, 24 Saxony Road, Framingham, Mass. for a special permit for community and event space at 43 Main Street. PBD, Mass. is filed in accordance with sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance with the following conditions. One, hours of operation for events indoor business administration, Sunday through Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 10:30, with back deck closed and outdoor cooking and related cleanup to cease by 8:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to midnight with back door, back deck closed and outdoor cooking and related cleanup to cease by 10:00 p.m. Two, hours of operation, events set up, indoor cleanup, 1.5 hours before or after hours of operation. Three, there will be no trucks and no loading or unloading of vehicles in the rear of the building between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. Saturday, 1:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. Sunday, and between the hours of 11:00 p.m. Sunday through Thursday, and 6:00 a.m. Monday through Friday. Trucks that are not able to make a three-point turn on the property to exit the property shall not be permitted in the rear of the building at any time, and shall utilize the Main Street loading zone only. Four, there will be no idling of any vehicles permitted in the rear of the building. Five, there will be no smoking of any type, vaping anywhere on the property. Six, use of parking spaces at the rear of the building- Six, use of parking spaces at the rear of the building will be limited to use by employees and event support staff. Seven, owners will make ongoing reasonable efforts to prevent noise from becoming disruptive to residential abutters. Eight, owner contact information will be provided to district director abutters to facilitate addressing issues that may arise. Nine, there will be no amplified noise or music permitted on the back deck or outdoor at any time. The garbage, excuse me, the garage door may remain open to allow flow in, out of the building, to and from the deck during the hours the deck is permitted to be open. The garage door will remain closed when possible to limit noise, and the garage door will always be closed during the hours deck is not permitted open. Ten, as soon as economically feasible, a visual buffer, lattice work, and/or landscaping or other will be established around the back deck to provide some degree of privacy to residential abutters. Eleven, all outdoor cooking equipment, temporary propane, charcoal, and electric power grills, smokers, roasters, or similar equipment will be operated only by professional staff and with limited noise. All outdoor cooking activity will take place on, to the extent permitted by fire safety codes, or adjacent to the back deck as far from residential abutters property as possible. Twelve, any lights at the rear of the building will be designed and situated so that they do not illuminate abutters properties, and all lights at the rear of the building will be off during times that back deck use and outdoor cooking facility activity are not permitted, except to the limited extent lighting is required by code to illuminate emergency egress and to facilitate loading or unloading activity. Thirteen, the primary means of access and egress of events participants in and out of events shall be by way of the Main Street doors, except for the purpose of accessing the back deck. The rear doors to the building shall only be utilized by event participants as an emergency exit. Fourteen, trash recycling and debris related to events will be removed from the site on a daily basis. Visitors/vendors who utilize the event space to prevent the accumulation of any such materials. A dumpster on the site utilized by the restaurant or other commercial use tenant shall be placed such that it does not create a nuisance condition, objectionable odor, rodent attraction, et cetera, to abutters, and if moved from current location, shall be screened in some manner to minimize abutters' visibility to the dumpster. Fifteen, Tim, I'd like to add the construction hours that I mentioned under city ordinance. Sixteen, I will address the notes by the Health Department, and I know, Sarah, you've already addressed this, but the Health Department did comment, the food is to be prepared on-site for service to the public. A commercial kitchen, meeting the requirements of the federal food code, must be installed. A plan review must be conducted by the Health Department prior to the start of renovation. And lastly, the comments from the Fire Department, the building shall comply with all current life safety codes that are required by the Building Code, Mass General laws, and NFPA Thank you very much.
If there's no other comments on the motion, roll call.
Counselors O'Neill.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Razagnall.
Yes.
Turco.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries 9 to 0 to absent.
For...
Can we get a, Mr. President? We have one minute. Recession.
Public hearing on Thursday evening, February 22, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. in the Frank Lloyd Wayne Auditorium, City Hall, 20th Filol Street, Peabody Mass, on the application from Diomedes Mejia, 80 Boulder Street, Lynn, Mass, for a special permit seeking to operate an auto repair business with indoor storage only at 36B Walnut Street, Peabody Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Counselor Edward Archaris, City Council President.
The applicant, please read their name and state their address.
My name is Diomedes Mejia, and I live in 80 Boulder Street in Lynn, Mass.
Mr. President, if I may, his wife, Jasmini, would like to be the...
Chancellor.
Focal point, if that's possible, please.
That'd be great.
And my name is Jasenya Mejia, and I'm also at the same address, 80 Boulder Street in Lynn.
Would you like to tell us a little bit what you'd like to do?
Yeah, so today we're here to seek approval to, a little closer, today we're here to seek approval to obtain an auto repair license for the dealership that he currently has at 36 Walnut Street.
Just for the audience to know, we do have some hearing adapters here for anybody in the audience who would like to utilize them if they have a hard time hearing. I know sometimes the mic doesn't pick everything up, but we're in the center table here, we do have devices to help you hear. Is anyone, excuse me, is anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in favor like to speak? Is anyone in the audience opposed? Anyone in the polls? Like to open it up to the council. Counselor. Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. President. Acting for, and you could count on acting is the correct word, for Counselor Mitsoulis, who was ill tonight. Humberto Mejia currently owns a business at 36B, and if some of us recall, those who were on the council, we approved a permit for him to sell automotive cars, automotives, excuse me, automobiles, out of a garage next to the Walnut Mart, to the left of the Walnut Mart. It's actually a butts and is connected to the Walnut Mart building. He currently sells automotives out of there, automobiles, I keep saying automotives, automobiles out of there, some through the internet, this is where he stores a number of the cars, but he'd like to get into auto repair of cars prior to selling them, so that's why they're here before us, because it is not by right. So like, open that up to our fellow councilors. I don't really think there should be much of a problem, but I'd open up to my fellow councilors.
Fellow councilors, I mean, Counselor Saslaw.
So the used car license that you have, how many cars is that for?
10 cars.
Eight cars.
10.
10 cars? Okay, excuse me, I apologize, okay. And that is, I don't know if I remember this one, but that is for selling, all those cars are stored inside?
Correct.
Okay. And, and the area that you're going to be doing the auto body work, is that, are you kind of like, kind of splitting the garage and creating like a...
In the same location. So mostly, right now, he's thinking of mainly use, do repair shop for the same cars that he sells, if need be, and eventually, if the business kind of grows and he needs to increase the business to do repairs for all the cars, then maybe use it as well, but mainly right now for the cars that he sells.
So mainly, he'll buy the car, fix it up, and put it up for sale? Okay.
Exactly.
And that sounds like a great point. So the fine line that we're having with used car dealerships, whether it be in an auto body situation, or whether it be a garage, is that if we, obviously you have posted that you have 10-car used car license, you can sell 10 cars, you post that at your facility. The problem that we're kind of handcuffing our policeman with is the fact, when they go in a facility and they're trying to identify what cars are there for repair, what cars are there to be sold, what cars are there you're going to fix up. So I just want you to be aware of that with the amount of cars that you have, and at some point down the line, I think you're going to see some type of a designation, we're going to take those handcuffs off the police, and we're going to, we're going to make it easier, so when they go in, you're going to have to identify those 10 spots, probably numbered, you know, these are the 10 spots, these are the cars that are for sale. So just, all I would ask is that you respect that you have a 10-car license and that you operate that way, and however many cars you can fit inside of your auto body, that's great, and I wish you success. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's repair only, is that right? Repair only, we're not painting any, no, no painting at all? So no fumes associated with paint or similar? Okay. And have you seen the input from the Health Department?
At this point, not yet.
Not yet? So the input from the Health Department is that the business must be constructed and operated so as to prevent the occurrence of nuisance, odors, noise, and particulates, and other environmental impacts on abutters. Do you see any issues with making sure that you can comply with that?
No issues at all. The space is constructed big enough that can actually refrain that from the building going out.
Before I already have it.
Right, and before, my husband's...
Before I started working there, about three.
Right, before they run an auto repair in the past.
All right, thank you. And Mr. President, through you, you're also, you're aware that you may need to make some adjustments based on some inputs from the Fire Department. You're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other councilors? Counselor Gould.
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. President.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Mr. President, I'd like to move forward on the application for Diomedes Mejia, 80 Boulder Street, Lynn, for a special permit seeking to operate an auto repair service business with indoor storage only at 36B Walnut Street. So moved.
Heard the motion? Counselor McGinn.
Thank you. On the motion, would you, would you be open to adding the condition, as the two conditions stipulated, one by Health and one by the Fire Department, Counsel Gould?
Add those conditions, please, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Roll call.
Counselors O'Neill.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Saslaw.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Razagnall.
Yes.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
Gravell.
Yes.
Charis.
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0 to absent.
Like to move to 4C. Would the clerk please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 22, 2018, at 7:30 p.m. in the Frank Lloyd Wayne Auditorium, City Hall, 20th Filol Street, Peabody Mass, on the application from Maria Correa, trustee, 85 Main Street, Peabody Mass, for a special permit seeking first-floor office use for the owner's second-floor two-one-bedroom apartments and third-floor two-one-bedroom apartments, all within the existing building in the B.C. zoning district at 7 Washington Street, Peabody Mass, as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.1, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Counselor Edward Archaris, City Council President.
Petitioner, please state your name and address for the record.
I practice law at 246 Andover Street here in Peabody, and I represent the petitioner, the Maine and Washington Street Land Trust, which owns 85 Main Street and 95 Main Street, and the adjacent subject property at 7 Washington Street. This application involves the full gut and an interior rehab of 7 Washington Street for the purpose of providing four one-bedroom residential units and business offices. There will be two residential units on the third floor, two units on the second floor, and business offices on the first floor. The basement will remain available for storage. Each of the residential units, again, will be one-bedroom. The overall investment will be in excess of $250,000. The exterior will be painted and repaired where necessary with no change to the exterior footprint. Three additional parking spaces will be added to the existing 47 spaces currently available and serving the property. A parking management plan has been drafted and attached to the application, as you can see. Because this requirement is new to your application, I've tried to review and refine it with the guidance of our good city clerk and Counselor McGinn, both of whom have been extremely helpful. I think it is correct and in proper form, and I note that this site provides more onsite parking for its tenants than any other downtown site. This request provides additional needed housing in the downtown without changing the appearance or character of the neighborhood. It makes use of a building which has remained empty for at least a dozen years. It conforms to all pertinent regulations. Other than the addition of three parking spaces and signage regarding traffic flow and space markings, all of which are meant to improve existing conditions, there are no exterior changes. The site was previously used as a branch bank office with a drive-up window. The drive-up was eliminated over a dozen years ago, and the bank ceased doing business before that. As stated, the building has been empty and unused for over a dozen years. Our new parking and zoning ordinance for the downtown area now makes it possible and economically feasible for the applicant and owner to make this investment. Again, to review, there are no changes to loading facilities, no additional noise or glare, no change regarding utilities, screening or buffering, no change to required yards, and no additional requirements as far as municipal facilities are concerned, and no changes to the prior site plans previously submitted with this piece of property, except for the additional three parking spaces, which we are adding to the existing 47 spaces. For all of the above reasons, I believe it meets the requirements for the granting of a special permit under Section 6 of our zoning ordinance, and with that, I'll close and address any questions you may have. Thank you. Before I do that, I just want to compliment everybody on the sound system. This is the first time I've been able to hear everybody and myself, and I'm thrilled. Thank you for that.
You're lucky you weren't here a couple of weeks ago. Is anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in the audience in favor? Anyone in the audience opposed? Any opposed? Like to open up to counsel. Counselor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. You've heard the description of the project, and you've seen the drawings. This is a property that, as mentioned, has been vacant for quite some time. It was historically a home, but most recently, a commercial use as a bank branch. I believe the proposed residential mixed-use fits with the uses in the vicinity. It's a complicated property, as there are three buildings on the lot. If the special permit's approved, all three will include a residential component. There has been considerable effort made to gain agreement between the applicant and the assessor's office on the unit count and unit configuration for 95 Main Street, which is the building on the corner, and as of early yet today, this issue has been resolved to the satisfaction of the assessor. As a result, the plan of land and the parking management plan needed to be corrected, so under suspension of the rules, I would move to receive a late communication stamped by the city clerk's office on February 15, 2018, and refer to this hearing. So moved. So moved. I was, there was a late communication, which is an attachment to the, to the plan of land. So, under suspension of the rules, move to receive the late communication stamped by the city clerk's office on February 15, 2018, and refer to this hearing. So moved.
So, heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
So what I'm referring to, Councilor, is when you look at your plans, you've got kind of this piece of paper stapled on here, which is a correction to the note on the parking calculation. And this is a reconciliation of what we've come to agreement with on the assessor's office. So I just want you to understand why you've got this piece of paper hanging off of here. And then you'll also see that attached, as was mentioned by the attorney, is the parking management plan that was submitted on the, on the February 15th as well. So the communication corrects the plan of land and the special permit application. I reviewed the parking management plan, and I find it to be adequate. For it to be successful, it will need to be actively managed by the property owner. But the property owner will remain, or will maintain, I should say, their office at 7 Washington Street. So I believe they will be well positioned to address any of the parking issues that arise on the site. This property, as everybody well knows, is on a very busy intersection of Washington and Main Streets. So in order to minimize the disruption to that intersection, the applicant is going to maintain a vehicular traffic flow through a property that enters on Washington Street and exits only on Main Street with a right turn only. I've proposed a number of conditions to which the applicant is fully agreeable, and I support the application, and at this time would defer to other councilors.
Councilor Grevell.
Thank you, Council President. And I was kind of praying I'd lived long enough to see this building occupied. You know, I first came on the council, there were a couple of things that really got me, and one was Crystal Lake. I thought, gee, will I ever see Crystal Lake cleaned up? And my God, I'm seeing it. And this building in particular, I was absolutely dismayed when the bank left there, because it's a beautiful old building, and they just let it go to ruins. It wasn't the bank's fault, it was the former owner's part of a retirement fund, and long story about how it went into deterioration. We had to practically, you know, break arms to get them to paint it, because the paint was falling off of it. And then I guess to appease us, you know, they put that rickety fence in the front so that the people waiting for the bus wouldn't be sitting on the steps. And at the time, we had the drug rehabilitation across the betting court building, where we had a big hangout here. You know, I'm so familiar with that, because, you know, I operated a business on 81 Main Street for years. And, you know, if you walked, a lot of people liked to walk around the corner, it would be an eyesore to walk by, and it would be a hazard, you know, at night with the groups that were hanging out there. So I am absolutely in support of this. I'm thrilled that it's a mixed-use property. I believe it will be well managed and maintained, and I commend you for bringing this before us, because this is a long time coming, years and years and years. Thank you.
Councilor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one question through you to the petitioner. In your statement, you mention at this time, the basement will remain unoccupied for, and used for storage. And I'm wondering if you have future plans to put additional units down there, because as we hear from the ward councilor, that the unit count and the configuration were discussed and ironed out, and it was a rub with the assessor's office. Or if you do, will it affect the parking? So I'd rather have that discussion now, what the, what the long-term plan is for the basement, if you plan to come back and ask for additional units.
No, we have no, we have no plans to come back for an additional unit. We have been asked by Gallo Nero whether or not that space might be used for storage, whether he might be able to use it for something else. We have no plans to use it for additional residential purposes. We'd like to keep it the way it is, so that it could serve our present tenants at 95 and 85 Main.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilors? Councilor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question, David. Any of these, these are all market rate rents, or are they, will any of these fall under our affordable rental units toward our affordable cap? Just a curious question.
These, the question, is it rent, is it affordable or is it market? These are all market rentals. The, I don't believe that at the time that these were created, that there was a count. I can't swear to this, but I don't believe that any of them were used for purposes of satisfying the 10% 40B requirement. That was quite, quite some time ago, so I, I'm not sure whether the city council did not, to be honest with you, Councilor Turco.
Thank you.
I think some of the units would qualify, in other words, the rentals. I think they might qualify as being affordable, but again, there's no requirement.
Thank you, David. On that, I'll defer to Council McGinn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Councilor Turco. This, this will not trigger inclusionary zoning, this proposal. So their intent is to rent them as market rate, and that's actually one of the, one of the conditions.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to close the public hearing.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Council McGinn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move to approve the application for Maria Carrera, trustee, 85 Main Street, Peabody, Mass., for the special permit seeking first-floor office use for the owner, second-floor two-one bedroom apartments, and third-floor two-one-bedroom apartments, all within existing building in the B.C. zoning district at 7 Washington Street, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.1, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance, with the following conditions. There shall be a maximum total of four dwelling units in the single structure. There should be a maximum total of two dwelling units on the second level of the structure, a maximum total of two dwelling units on the third level of the structure, and no dwelling units on the first level of the structure, and no dwelling units on the basement level of the structure. Number two, the petitioners shall make reasonable commercial effort to maintain all dwelling units as market-rate apartments or condominiums. Number three, residential parking shall be in accordance with the parking management plan included with the application as 12E continuation sheet parking management plan. Number four, the flow of vehicular traffic through the site shall be maintained with vehicular access from Washington Street only, and vehicular egress onto Main Street only, right turn only. Number five, in accordance with special permit application, all exterior, the exterior of the building will be painted and repaired, and the petitioners shall seek guidance on all exterior renovations to the structure from the Peabody Historical Commission. Number six, no apparatus, including but not limited to antennas or satellite receiving devices, shall be placed on any roof or facade of the structure where visible from Main Street or Washington Street. Number seven, no window air conditioners or similar apparatus shall be installed in the windows of the structure, and all HVAC equipment will be installed such that it is not visible or screened from sight from adjacent streets into our properties. Number eight, any sign for the commercial use in the structure shall comply with the zoning ordinance of the City of Peabody. Number nine, all trash and recycling shall be contained in the rear of the structure, not visible from the street, and adequately screened such that it is not visible to the abutters, and such trash and recycling storage shall be indicated on the final version of the site plan and shall be approved by the Construction Review Committee. Number 10, trash and recycling materials shall be removed by a private trash removal service, and no municipal trash pickup shall be provided. For the avoidance of doubt, trash collection shall be in accordance with the ordinance of the City of Peabody, and no trash or refuse recycling collection shall occur between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM any day of the week. Number 11, if possible, given the limitations of the site landscaping, will be established and maintained on Washington Street in accordance with the provisions of Section 10.3, 10.53 C-2 and 5.28 of the City of Peabody zoning ordinance, and shall be approved by the Construction Review Committee. Number 12, in accordance with the ordinance of the City of Peabody, construction's hours of operation shall be 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM Monday through Friday, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Saturday. Number 13, the project shall be subject to construction review and subject to the recommendations of the Construction Review Committee. Number 14, the building shall be protected by an automatic sprinkler system per Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Section 26I, and the Mass. State Building Code 15. Alleged violations of special permit conditions may result in a show cause hearing at the city council. So moved.
Any comments on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilors O'Neil?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Mazzullis?
I mean, no, wrong councillor.
Still, he's still not here. Yes.
Razagnal?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Grevell?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to nothing, one absent.
Thank you.
The councilor, please read the notice. Clerk, please read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Peabody, acting as a special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, February 22nd, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Franklin Wayne Auditorium, City Hall 24 Lowell Street, Peabody, Mass., on the, on the application from Marcy Luber, Griffith Properties, 260 Franklin Street, Boston, Mass., for a special permit to operate a 24-hour, seven-days-a-week gas operations center, including but not limited, limited to the storage of meters, pipes, and parts, including office, warehouse, crew rooms, fleet slash employee vehicle parking, and fleet maintenance, and repair, outdoor storage, and other uses customarily accessory to any of the fore, of the foregoing. At One Technology Drive, Peabody, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the Peabody zoning ordinance. Peabody City Council Councilor Edward A. Charis, City Council President.
Will you please state your name and address for the clerk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the City of Peabody City Council, my name is John Kelty. I'm an attorney. I have offices at 40 Lowell Street in Peabody, Massachusetts, and I appear this evening on behalf of Marcy C. Luber, who is a principal at Griffith Properties. They are of 260 Franklin Street in Boston, Massachusetts. Property is located at One Technology Drive here in Peabody, Massachusetts, and it is Zoned IP, Industrial Park. The owner of the property is a subsidiary, a sister company of Griffith Properties, and it is referred to as P8/GP4 One Tech LLC, care of Griffith Properties. Why it is that name, I have no idea, but that's, that's the actual name of the LLC that owns the property. With me this evening are representatives of Griffith Property and National Grid. The proposal before you this evening is we seek a special permit for utilization of the rear of the property as a contractor's yard. It would be, be used by National Grid. It would become their local facility for servicing local residences, and in general, it will have vans, no pickup, no pickup trucks, no dump trucks. Those would be at a different facility located outside of Peabody. This would be vans and very small box trucks. And they would be approximately 50 employees at the premises. There would be a night crew. That's what the reference to the crew quarters is. Their, the night crew is on the premises. They're about three or four people, and they only go out in an emergency situation and investigate. Otherwise, they would probably be on the premises. They are not, however, sleeping there, they're not quartered there, but there are changing rooms for the other employees. We have indicated that the number of vehicles on the premises would be somewhere not in excess of 120 vehicles. That's because we have 50 employees. There are 50 approximate vans, and for a brief moment in time, the vans could be there at the same time as the people are taking the cars off the property. The property will be completely enclosed with a six-foot-high side impervious fence. That's the requirement for outdoor storage as a contractor's yard. The storage of materials inside the premises is warehousing. That's an allowed-by-right use in this zoning district. And we are asking for 24/7 operation, only inasmuch as most of the vans are on the site in a very regular workday, seven to, seven to five or six. And the night crew is the only thing that triggers 20, our request for 24/7, because they're, they're burdened with the responsibility of emergency, emergency visits. We've indicated what it is we intend to store on the premises. There's pipes, meters. All the meters would be indoors. Some of the excess and surplus pipe would be located in bins that would store the, store the gas pipes on the premises. There is no transmission. There is going to be no transmission of gas from this facility to any place. It's strictly a service-oriented contractor's yard. We will be adding a section of fence. We've agreed that if there are any sections of the fence that is existing and shows on my plan, that I gave you in the original packet and this evening, that's the same plan, shows a chain link fence, that will have to be fixed with slats so that it would make the impervious fence a requirement. We have agreed that we would consider adding further arborvitae if there are places where, over the years, the arborvitae's have, have deteriorated, only in order to try to create some sort of sound deadening, which is why the arborvitae's were planted in the first place. And I think that is it. I have representatives of the grid. I have representatives of the Griffith Properties here with me this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have. I know that at least one councillor has visited a similar facility in Waltham, Mass., and that's the exact facility that would be functioning here in Peabody.
Does anyone in the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition? Russ? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Thank you very much. My name is Russell Donovan. I'm 12 Quail Road. I'm a legal abbot to this property. I hate it when I have to go far or against, all right? So I just want to give the city council, since there are new city councils here, and some of you haven't had the history of Technology Drive, I'd like to shortly tell you a short history. I'm an abbot. Back in 1980, the city developed Centennial Park. The first development on that warehouse, which was a special permit, was SS Pierce. They came to the neighborhood, invited the neighbors to their woven properties, wined us and dined us, told us they were going to be a good neighbor. They had the professionals, the engineers, telling us they knew the property very well, and it was going to be an asset to the City of Peabody and not a problem to the neighborhood. All sounded good. We voted for it. City council voted for it. Construction started. All of a sudden, the engineers were wrong. There was too much alleged, and the property had to be raised about eight feet for cost. So we, the building that we were not supposed to see in five years- So even the building that we were not supposed to see in five years, we're seeing here 40 years later. And we listened to the engineers, the experts. The city council, the city government, listened to the experts. Why I bring this up is because before the city council, in the future, there will be more warehouses, more construction. You will be listening to the experts, who know their profession, and then the real world will come out and will have to settle with that. Having said that, with the development of the warehouse in SS Pierce, the neighborhood was supposed to be protected with a buffer zone. There is no buffer zone. The vegetation was planted along the railroad tracks, never grew, because the trees were high. They didn't live. Technology Drive itself was supposed to be no parking. Then it changed to no overnight parking. And for the next 35 years, the neighborhood was the problem, because the truckers were parking overnight. And we called police department and said, "We're being awakened by the overnight truckers." We became the problem to the City of Peabody. We were not important enough for them to send the squad cars up there. We had public hearings down here. We had noise problems, but the neighborhood became the problem. The city council and the city government did not give us protection to our neighborhood. Now, I'm not opposed to this, per se, but just last year, in 2016, special permit came before us for the same property on the former owner. They changed it from definition from a warehouse to a trucking terminal, and they said there were going to be no changes. At that time, I believe Counselor Wood, one Turco, requested that the fencing be taken down in front of the parking lot. And lo and behold, once it was approved, outside lighting, which was part of the original special permit that we were not going to see this building, they put outside lighting on our side of the property for safety reasons, for a new code. So all these changes impact the neighborhood. And what you propose and what you accept today will change tomorrow. We have a new ownership, because they transferred the property just a year after you made the special permit approval for the trucking terminal. You have a proposal coming before you for another special permit, or three technology drives coming up, that we talked about before about parking of vehicles. So what I say tonight is this: Your decision impacts the neighborhood. And I would ask National Grid right now, publicly, "Quail Road does not have gas in the street. We're a director butler. There's 35 homes on Quail Road and Robin Road. Can't we get gas in the street?" Hopefully, somebody from National Grid will hear our cry for gas on the street. It's an easy installation. I don't know why they won't do it. I've called several times, and it's just not on their agenda. The other thing on outside storage, there was a comment in here that he's going to put the fencing back up, I guess. It's going to be impervious. Hopefully, tonight, the city council will make it in the requirements that outside storage is not on our side of the warehouse, because on our side, we have the tracks, and it's open space. We have the lighting on that side of the wall now that shines into the bedroom windows. And I guess it's not a problem for those who don't live on Quail Road. And it's a safety issue. And now, at midnight, if the employees come to the back door and open the door up and have a cigarette and have a chat, we're going to hear it and see it, and, you know, it's a quality-of-life issue. So my point here is this: Things are subject to change. There's supposed to be no parking on Technology Drive. We're looking for increased parking on adjacent properties, and we've called, and the neighborhood becomes a problem to the city, not the warehouses. It's time to listen to the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I just, because I want to address some of Russ's concerns before I actually move with this special permit application. First, the removal of the fence in the front of that building was at the request of some of the residents, because the trucks had nowhere to go if they came in early and they parked on the circle, which abuts Quail Road. So that was us listening to the residents, as we always do. As far as the rest of it, if you look at the only special permit in that building, which is for Nippon, Normandy, the former owner was Normandy Properties for Nippon USA, the logistics facility. If you look at the conditions there, it says distinctly, "The fence on the Quail Road side of the building will remain intact at all times." So, you know, the fence issue has been addressed. As far as parking on the rotary that goes into the property, that's city property, there are signs there that say, "No idling, no truck, no overnight truck parking." And I've been up there a number of times in the last couple of weeks. It's sufficient. I haven't seen an issue. I did see some trash up there that I relayed to Public Services, and that was picked up. But now, I just want to get to the building very quickly. So for those of you that don't know, this is One Technology Drive, the old U.S. Foods building. What happened last year that Mr. Donovan refers to is it was subdivided into four pieces. The first space was rented by CNE Direct, which was a victim of the Fifth Street fire, and the city actually helped them to relocate to this building. They've been a non-issue since they've been there. They've been great, very quiet, and I could speak to that. Like I said, I've been to the property a lot. The second tenant was Stavis Seafood, and they went into the refrigerated, excuse me for one second. Mr. President, move to receive a late communication from Attorney Jack Kelty, and those are the renderings of the external portion of the building and internal construction of the building.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any polls? It's a vote.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, and to the council, so looking at this, the rendering here, which is the exterior of the building, photograph, the left side of the building would be CNE Direct, excuse me, would be Stavis Seafood, where the refrigerated portion of the building is. The right side of the building is, which is where National Grid would be going, and the portion where the red dumpster is, so basically that corner of the building. And I believe it's the, if I'm not mistaken, the south side of the building, where you see the trees in the back, about Quail Road there. And there is a fence in that area, which, according to the zoning, needs to be made site impervious. I believe a proportion of it is, and I did speak to Attorney Kelty, and I spoke to the people from Griffith Properties, and I will speak further to it, but there needs to be some additional buffering added to that area in order to accommodate the neighbors. I understand it's a bowl. The sound travels down into that neighborhood. The third use was Nippon USA. They've been there for a year now. They occupy four bays in that building, and the last will be National Grid to fill the building. My only concern is that Stavis's lease, I believe, expires next year, so this will come back before us. So I am going to ask Griffith Properties to address this before you come back before us with the noise to Quail Road, because this will be an issue each and every time you try to lease a space in this building. So you've invested a lot of money in it. I just, it only makes sense to me to invest in the neighborhood. They're asking you, you heard Mr. Donovan ask, that this be done, so I am going to ask you to provide some additional sound buffering for the neighbors. As far as the use, I went to the property with Counselor Melville, and we looked at that right side of the building. Went inside, they showed us where everything was. It seems like a very innocuous use to me. There's no loading of trucks on the west side of the building, which is great. I mean, as somebody that has been subjected to all these permits for trucking facilities, I think this is great to have this. I did visit the West Street facility that National Grid owns in Waltham. The site is meticulous. They do some outdoor storage there. It's yellow gas piping, which is held on outdoor racks very neatly. And I do understand that the West Street facility is one of their newer facilities, but it's meticulously kept, so I'm confident that National Grid will maintain that image. As hazardous materials, through you, Mr. President, Attorney Kelty, Jack, is there any hazardous materials on the site at all? Okay, in the event...
No, there is not.
Okay. You know, Jack, I'm going to ask, actually, for the benefit of the council, if National Grid can come up and actually give a description of what their everyday work would entail. They did this for us. It's very brief, if you don't mind.
My name's Kevin Mahoney. I'm a director for National Grid. I have jurisdiction over our first responders, the customer meter service group, which would be located at this facility. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. My first question to you is, did you and I deal with, did you help me with some issues at Brown's Pond, the fallen tree? Was that you that I dealt with?
I don't recall. I don't think so. I wish I could say yes.
I was just curious if it was the same Kevin. I wanted to say thank you for that. But anyway, could you describe to this council what your everyday activities will be?
Yeah, sure. Sure. We're basically a service operational center. We're the first responders. We respond to public emergencies, gas leaks, customer emergencies, requests. We also perform appointment-type activities. We'll come out, change your meter. If you have a CO type issue, we may respond to something like that. You know, again, if you smell gas, you're calling our 1-800 number, and most likely you'll see one of us in the vans. And we do some what we call fitting work, so we may come out and install a gas meter to an industrial or commercial-type building. But that's pretty much the gist of it. We are not what we call the field operations side, the guys that come out and will look for leaks out in the street with the backhoe, things of that nature. They'll be elsewhere. We're strictly a service operational type center.
Thank you. And as far as the outdoor storage, could you, by way of this photograph, show me, and I don't, Jack, I hope you have another one up there. Could you show me where, and show the council where the outdoor storage will take place, and describe a little bit about what you're storing there?
Well, to be quite honest with you, we've, it's not been brought to my attention as to exactly where things are going to be laid out. I actually have a call tomorrow to get into greater detail. But typically, we try to keep it off to the side, out of public view, of course, much like with what you saw over in Waltham. We would use the same type of racking system, try to keep it to a very minimum purpose, and only store anything outside that we absolutely would have to. Most of our meters and things of that nature would go inside, and so, given the space and what we can keep inside, we would. But again, there could be the likelihood with some of the piping, larger-type piping, would be stored outside.
In that picture, that shows, that actually shows the trucks that are further down, that are the fisheries business, this part of the parking lot actually gets gated, and the people at the other ends of the building will not have access to the area where National Grid's vans are going to be parked. So that doesn't show, because that's going to be installed. So the piping would all be shielded from view either down the driveway of this facility or from a view, because they'll be lower than the trees and fences that are on the south side of the building.
Thank you. Kevin, thank you for your description. Jack, I just had one question for the owners of Griffith, or representatives for Griffith Property, if I could.
Yep.
Dawn, thank you. It was nice to see you again. I had a question that I had addressed with the previous owner. Congratulations on the purchase of the building. The gas pumps, do you have any intention on using those gas pumps at all on the property? And you'll agree to that in the special permit, that those won't be used?
They will not be used.
Okay. Thank you. And you heard my previous statements about the residents of Quail Road. It's been an ongoing issue. You know, unlike Mr. Donovan said, we do consider the effect on them. It is a truck, a large trucking facility, you know, and I think the soundproofing needs to be addressed. So if you could look at the arborvitae that are dead, maybe replace some of those in the future, invest in some soundproofing for the Quail Road side of the building. I think it would go a long way for this council. It would go a long way for the Quail Road relationship. So thank you. And, Mr. President, I don't think I'm forgetting to ask anything, but I'll open it up to the council. Thank you.
Counselor Sasla.
Just had one quick question. The service operational center, where is that worked on now? So where do your people come from now, Mr. Mahoney?
We're currently located out of the Beverly facility.
I'm actually very familiar with where that is, right on the water there. So is this an expansion, or are you still going to keep that location going? Is this an expansion, or how would you describe it?
I don't know if I'd call it an expansion. It's more, to be quite honest with you, Beverly is at full capacity. So my group, again, the customer meter service group, decided to vacate that property because it's at full capacity, but also, this particular location gives us much greater access to our area of coverage, being right off Route 128. It's, you know, exiting in and out and being able to respond made this a really viable, good location for us, to respond to our customers.
Counselor Rozanol.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to touch on something briefly. The Health Department's comments, it says applicant does not indicate storage of any potential hazardous or flammable materials, yet on the plans, it shows a fuel shed. Could you just elaborate on that, please? Thank you.
We're not utilizing that fuel shed, so we're not storing. That was the question, I think, that Counselor Turco spoke to. Are we going to utilize those pumps?
So will they be removed?
Will the shed be removed? Do we know?
Hi, my name is Scott Navarrell from National Grid. I just want to touch base on the fleet repair garage we're going to have there. We are going to have limited quality quantities of waste materials or hazardous materials from minor truck repairs from oil changes.
Which would be conducted indoors.
Right, which would be conducted indoors and with all code and compliance for the town, city, and state.
But that fuel shed, that's out there.
And the fuel shed, as we stated before, is not going to be used. It's actually going to be Jersey variated off, so we have no access to it or anything.
But it will not be removed?
It will not be removed, no.
Thank you. Counselor Melville.
Just like I went, Counselor Turco was speaking to earlier, I had an opportunity to go visit the site with him, along with the representatives from National Grid and the property owner. It seemed more than appropriate, according to the descriptions that were given by Counselor Turco and the representatives, that this is actually a much lower impact than what it could have been, and also that it's the interaction going in and out, especially when you read it and you're reading that you're going to be there applying to operate for a 24-hour gas operations center. That, I was... a 24-hour gas operation center, that, I was very relieved upon leaving, seeing that that's more of a logistical center than it is a gas operation center. So I am in support of this, and I thank them for giving me the opportunity and explaining from A to Z what they were planning on doing. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Return to Counselor Turco.
Mr. President, move to close the public hearing.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, move to approve the application from Massey-Loba Griffith Properties, 260 Franklin Street, Boston, Mass. for a special permit to operate it at 24 hours, seven-day-a-week gas operation center, including but not limited to the storage of meters, pipes, and parts, including office, warehouse, crew rooms, fleet employee vehicle parking, and fleet maintenance and repair, outdoor storage and other uses customarily accessory to any of the foregoing at One Toilet Technology Drive, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance, with the following conditions, the condition from the Health Department, number one, applicant does not indicate storage of any potentially hazardous flammable materials, if in the event there are, notify Sharon Cameron from the PBD Health Department. Number two, the fire department comments, business shall comply with all applicable codes, regulations, and laws, permits for modifications, additions to fire alarm indoor sprinkler to be obtained through fire prevention. Three, the site impervious fencing shall be maintained and/or repaired in order to comply with PBD zoning. Five, additional, excuse, five, four, additional sound buffering shall be added in the form of abreviations, indoor sound buffering fences on the Quail Road side of the building, and last, no use of the gas pumps on the property.
Heard the motion, any comments on the motion? Roll call, vote.
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
Gravel?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to nothing, one absent.
Thank you very much.
AG is a continual hearing, as we talked earlier, March 22nd. We go to reports of committee, Counselor Gould, could you, Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Reporting out for legal affairs, we met early this evening, on February 22nd, at 6:30 PM. Present on the committee were Counselors Gould, Gravel, and O'Neal, and sitting in for Counselor Montsulus was Counselor Turco. Also present were Counselors Charis, Manning Martin, Melville, and Rozignol. We had three items on the agenda. First item was a request to purchase city-owned land at the end of Rockway Road, we had received a request from one of the parties to remove that from the agenda as they seek alternative means of working out their issues, so that matter will remain in committee for the time being, that is a report of progress on item A. Item B was an easement request from Georgia Inc. Incorporated, doing business at Trackside Bar and Grill, 30 Warren Street, and there was a presentation made by Attorney Ethan Von Zalitis with request to the, with respect to the request for the easement. That request had been reviewed thoroughly by the Assistant City Solicitor, Adam Buckley, who was also present at the hearing, at the, excuse me, at the committee meeting, and there was a motion from Counselor Turco, and the motion was that, motion by the City Council, the City PBD, to authorize the mayor to grant and execute a permanent and exclusive right and easement upon a portion of the Warren Street right-of-way layout to John M. Betancourt as trustee of Trackside Realty Trust, shown on easement, as easement A on plan entitled "Easement Plan 29 Crown and Shield Street, PBD, Mass. for John Betancourt, dated December 11th, 2017, prepared by Civil and Environmental Consultants LLC. So moved."
Heard the motions, any opposed? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the third item on the agenda was a request that was brought to us by then-counselor-at-lodge Tom Walsh, now our state representative, requesting that we contemplate language for zero-emission vehicle charging stations, that the request that we deal with that now, as these are becoming more common, as more electric cars or in hybrids come online, there was some draft language that was prepared by Assistant City Solicitor Adam Buckley, that was reviewed. There were a couple of modifications made to the language, and there was a motion by Counselor Gravel to advance, to advertise the language as presented by the Assistant City Solicitor, as an addition to our ordinance's Section 19-118, as modified and as edited by the subcommittee. So moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President, and with that, we adjourn. Thank you.
Counselor Gould?
Mr. President, I think as the chair of the committee of the whole, you just have to refer that I made the motion, I think the report out, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, comes from the president, doesn't it?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to report out the discussion of the mayor's salary raise, it was voted eight to one, with one present. Motion was made by Counselor Gould. We need to have a roll call?
Mr. President, if I may, just to clarify, I don't believe it was, I believe it was nine, nothing, one present, not eight to one.
The motion coming out of committee?
Eight, one, eight.
Is to increase the mayor's salary to $120,000 and to advertise the ordinance. The motion that, the roll call that came, that came out of committee was eight to one, one absent, and one present. Counselor Melville voted in opposition.
I apologize, my mistake. Thank you.
No need keeping me on my toes, Counselor Gould, I do appreciate that. Roll call, vote?
Counselors O'Neal?
Yes.
Counselor McGinn?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Sasla?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Present.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Turco?
Yes.
Melville?
No.
Gravel?
Yes.
Charis?
Yes.
Motion carries, eight to one, one absent, one present.
Move to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor O'Neal?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the suspension of rules, move to receive item 7F. So moved.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. No further motions.
Counselor Gould?
No motions, Mr. President.
Counselor Sasla?
Yes, under suspension of rules, motion to receive item 8B.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And no further motions. Thank you.
Counselor Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a co-motion with Ward Six Counselor for the Parks Department to trim or remove a tree, whichever is needed, at 22 Lindauer Street in PBD. So moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd also request that the City Council do its annual review of a release of executive session minutes, to release any executive session minutes that are no longer required by law to be kept in exec session. I think there are at least two more Brophy case exec session meeting minutes that need to be released, but if we could do our annual review and release all that are required to be released at this point? So moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could request Community Development Department to present to the council a count of our affordable housing stock with respect to 40B, and give us an update and a plan on how we're moving forward to meet our affordable housing mandates and requirements with respect to 40B. So moved.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if I could refer that to Human Services Department, actually, put that in the subcommittee, that'd be great. Thank you.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Ozonoff?
No motions at this time.
Counselor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive, under suspension of the rules, item 8C, and set up a public hearing.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to receive item 8K, and set up a public hearing.
You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Mr. President, through you to the clerk, on that 8K, Tim, could you include the denied application from, I believe, three years ago, where we denied the storage of undamaged vehicles at that same address with that special permit application?
From three years ago?
Yeah, I believe it was 2000, I wasn't on the council, but I think it was 2014 where the council denied the use of that property for school buses.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. One motion. Move to have the PBD Department of Public Services provide a cost estimate to add fencing and/or repair the fencing on Technology Drive at the Rotary End closest to One Technology Drive, budding Quail Road. Thank you.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Counselor Melville?
No motions tonight, thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Gravel?
Under suspension of rules, move to receive late communications from Robert Langley, PBD Communication Development Authority, regarding 795 Jubilee Drive site plan. So moved.
Do you have a number on that?
It was a late communication.
Oh, late communications, I'm sorry. You heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
If you'd like, I'll give it a number next time. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to move to receive items 7A, which are appointments from the mayor, as pertains to Bernard Horowitz and Michael Garabedian. Bernard Horowitz being appointed to the position of Board of Health, term to expire one month, February, a three-year term, expiring February 2021, and Michael Garabedian to the Board of Appeals, two-year term, expiring 12/31/2018, for the unexpired term of Andrew Adnus. So moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item 7B, Statement of Interest in the Welsh School, refer to Subcommittee on Finance.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item 7C, Statement of Interest Center School, and refer to Subcommittee on Finance.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Under suspension of rules, I'd perceive item 7D, a request for the Finance Committee to review the salary of the Director of Public Services, refer to the Finance Committee. So moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor?
May I?
Yes, Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counselor Gravel. Counselor Gravel, if I could request, in your preparation for that meeting, if you could request the qualifications and any certifications that are required for that position, so that we can have a framework within which we can match the salary?
Sounds great.
Excellent, thank you.
Add that to the motion, thank you. Under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item 7E, Transfer of Funds Regarding the Fire Budget, from the overtime account, the amount of $450,000, refer to Subcommittee on Finance.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Gonna have a great evening there, Tim. I'd also, under suspension of rules, like to receive item 7G, Information Regarding Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District, and set up a meeting in the Subcommittee on Finance, and invite our school committee representative, Beverly Ann Griffin Dunn, to provide augmented information based on her knowledge of the information we've received. So moved.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And under suspension of rules, I'd like to receive item 7H, and make a comment, basically that I appreciate the quick action that was taken on setting up the email accounts. I do know that, for some, it might be a little bit of a challenge, or interesting challenge, to set it up. I can tell you, I set mine up, and it's working beautifully. I'm able to operate that email account out of one Outlook account, and I'm also able to operate it in conjunction with my business account on my phone, and it comes with a number of additional packages I don't think that until you log on you're aware of, but you get the full office suite with it, and you also get a cloud account for storage, which can also be the backbone of building a portal for transporting the 303 pages that you received tonight, which will all end up in that bucket over there. So I would encourage you all to take advantage, and certainly, again, if you need my help in any way, shape, or form in setting up, I'd be happy to work with the IT group here as well, to get you set up on both your phone and your computer, I think you're gonna find it to be really convenient, so, but thank you to the mayor and to the IT department for doing that. Thank you.
Heard the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. It sounds real easy, Counselor Gravel, so I probably will be reaching out to you.
Hey, as a matter of fact, that we could use the new display? We could actually do a demo.
Be up for that. I have a couple, I'd like for the DPS to look at 26 Walker Lane, the manhole cover that needs to be repaired, and there's a point of information for everyone, the Tuesday, the 27th, here at the Wiggins, we'll be having a neighborhood meeting about 15 King Street, that's the old J.B. Thomas Hospital, representatives from the company who have purchased that property will be here, as well as city departments. So, again, out to the public, Tuesday, the 27th, 6:00 PM shop, here at the Wiggins in City Hall. And that's all I have. Motion for 8A?
Motion to receive item 8A.
8D?
Motion to receive item 8D and set up a special permit hearing. Motion to receive item 8E and set up a special permit hearing. Motion to receive item 8F. Motion to receive item 8G. Motion to receive no item H. We already received 8I. 8J, motion to receive and set up a special permit hearing.
8J, motion to receive and set up a special permit hearing. Motion to receive item 8L.
You heard the motions. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
9A, motion to approve all papers being in order, junk dealer's license renewal for 2018, ECO ATM LLC, 220 Andover Street. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? It's a vote.
Item 9B, motion to receive and approve all papers being in order for an entertainment license, renewal for 2018, Sue Chang's 373 Lowell Street and Cheesecake Factory, 210 Andover Street. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Keep going. 9C, motion to receive and approve Class III Motive Vehicle License, renewal for 2018, Naces Inc., 0 Kerwin Street. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
And lastly, 9D, motion to approve Taxi Limo Driver's License, Michael Bloomberg, License 53, all papers being in order. So moved.
Heard the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned, and again, counselors, if there's anyone else who would have, some people like to highlight on the moment of silence and pledge allegiance, I do not want to hog with all my people. Thank you.